Welcome to a broadcast of the recent Lorraine County Commissioners' General Meeting. Unless otherwise announced, meetings are held Wednesday morning at 9:30 at the Administration Building, 226 Middle Avenue, 4th floor, downtown Alariah. These are public meetings and you are invited to attend. Agendas are posted prior to the meeting at www.lorainecity.us. Click on Departments to see the Commissioners' page, then click on View Agenda.
Good morning. Can we please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning. Welcome to the June 22nd, 2011 Lorraine County Board of Commissioners' Meeting. Commissioner Krikowski has our dog this week.
Oh, she's strong. She's a strong little girl. This is about a four-month-old, Brindle Boxer Mitt. She's going to be available this Saturday at our Dog Pound. We have about forty-some dogs at the pound right now, so we need your help in coming to rescue some of our little friends out there. We have all kinds of dogs to choose from. You could also check us out on our website to see what we have available. Look at how nice she is. She's such a good girl. She wants to go home with somebody. I'm sure she'd make a wonderful pet for someone. Boxers are really, really nice dogs. So come out and help us out and bring home a pet for your family.
Under Resolutions Number One, Job and Family Services Bills?
So moved.
Second?
Discussion. Ms. Kayla?
Aye.
Ms. Kaskowski?
Aye.
Ms. Williams?
Aye.
Investments?
So moved.
Second?
Discussion. Ms. Kayla?
Aye.
Ms. Kaskowski?
Aye.
Ms. Williams?
Aye.
Transfers?
So moved.
Second?
Discussion. Ms. Kayla?
Aye.
Ms. Kaskowski?
Aye.
Ms. Williams?
Aye.
No advances, no repayments, requisitions?
So moved.
Second?
Discussion. Ms. Kayla?
Aye.
Ms. Kaskowski?
Aye.
Ms. Williams?
Aye.
Bills?
So moved.
Second?
Discussion. Ms. Kayla?
Aye.
Ms. Kaskowski?
Aye.
Ms. Williams?
Aye.
Under the Commissioners, authorize various personnel actions as indicated on the salary sheet for employees within jurisdiction Lorraine County Commissioners.
Mr. Cordez?
Commissioner Kayla, I know you have a pressing business shortly after the board meeting today, so I'm gonna do, not ask for an executive session, but I do want to get a resolution with regard to the labor contract we discussed in the executive session last week. So we can either do that at the conclusion here, the regular agenda items, or I can ask for that resolution now, what would be the flavor of the board?
That's the FOP contract?
Correct.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second?
Discussion. Ms. Kayla?
Aye.
Ms. Kaskowski?
Aye.
Ms. Williams?
Aye.
That should conclude a need for this line item. Thank you.
Approve and waive the reading of the same as the County Commissioners' Meeting minutes of June 8th and 15th, 2011.
So moved.
Second?
Discussion. Ms. Kayla?
Aye.
Ms. Kaskowski?
Aye.
Ms. Williams?
Aye.
Authorize a salary adjustment of Randall Widener bailiff over the municipal court effective July 4, 2011, at a bi-weekly rate of $511.24, reflecting two fifth county share.
So moved.
Second?
Discussion. Ms. Kayla?
Aye.
Ms. Kaskowski?
Aye.
Ms. Williams?
Aye.
Prove and enter an agreement with Lorraine County Growth Partnership to include a direct partnership for Northeast Ohio Sustainable Communities Consortium membership. $4.2 million was awarded by U.S. Department of HUD for three years, to consortium with local governments and nonprofit organizations in Northeast Ohio through NUACA as formal application and fiscal agent.
So moved.
Second?
Discussion. Ms. Kayla?
Aye.
Ms. Kaskowski?
Aye.
Ms. Williams?
Aye.
Authorize a supplemental trust indenture amendments to loan agreement and related documents for Series 1997 bonds issued for the benefit of EMH Regional Medical Center.
So moved.
Second?
Mr. Cordez?
Mm-hmm.
Would you like to just give an update for the next three?
Actually, I can't.
Oh, you can't? Oh, okay.
I didn't put them on the agenda.
Oh, okay. Well, what they are basically, they're just asking for a change from the 1997 bonds we did for them, which we do for community health partners or Mercy Hospital also.
Yeah, I was, I had information from them, but I wasn't, I should've looked at the draft. It's my bad. I didn't see that they were on there.
I read through it, so. I read through it, just changing a couple of things, and their items have to be changed.
Yeah, I think they're retiring some bonds.
Right.
It's to lower their cost.
Right.
But there's no, the county is not liable for any of the...
Well, they're conduit bonds. We did the conduit bonds a number of years ago, and we actually asked EMH to come back in county with their conduit bonds. They have been doing their healthcare bonds out of county. So a couple of years ago, we re-engaged them to do them here in Lorraine County, and we've had a very agreeable relationship. I just wasn't, I didn't pay attention to see that this was on there this week. And I had been working with their council, through our bond council, so I'm sure that everything has been provided for that was necessary.
Also moved.
Second?
Ms. Kayla?
Aye.
Ms. Kaskowski?
Aye.
Ms. Williams?
Aye.
Authorize supplemental trust and indenture amendments to loan agreement and related documents for Series 2001 bonds issued for benefit of EMH Regional Medical Center.
So moved.
Second?
Discussion. Ms. Kayla?
Aye.
Ms. Kaskowski?
Aye.
Ms. Williams?
Aye.
Authorize supplemental trust and indenture amendments to loan agreement and related documents for Series 2008 bonds issued for the benefit of EMH Regional Medical Center.
So moved.
Second?
Discussion. Ms. Kayla?
Aye.
Ms. Kaskowski?
Aye.
Ms. Williams?
Aye.
I have a question. Would you like to get through 19, 20, and 25, and then go back to 16? The pleasure of the board, so we can talk about that at the end?
Sure.
Yes.
Okay. Please go to 19.
Under 911, approve and enter an MOU with Village of Wellington, where Village will provide ground area owned by the village on Fairgrounds Road, and the electricity, and then will provide this foundation space for the village's equipment at the Communications Building. This is a relocation Lorraine County Fire Systems repeaters from Southern Repeater Site, which is presently located at State Route 58, Peck Wadsworth Road, building the house Lorraine County 911 Southwest Repeater, Combiner, Wellington Fire Repeater, Wellington Police Repeater, Southern Lorraine Ambulance District Repeater, and County Voter Site Equipment.
So moved.
Second? Was this added on?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. I didn't...
This is a, this is an agreement we've been working on since we lost our Verizon site. Jerry's been very instrumental in working with the language so that we can have an alternative location for our equipment. We're also being given a portable, I guess you want to call it an office type, to house the equipment in by Verizon. They no longer need that equipment, but we were housed with them in another location. The city of, the Village of Wellington also has some equipment, and they, they work collaborative with us to be able to work on that, use their tower out there, thus reducing some costs. There was just some nuances with the agreement with regard to liabilities and so forth, and I think Jerry, you worked, you worked all those out in the, in the language? That's correct. And this MOU will provide for no-cost solutions to relocating some antennas and equipment to support the 911 operation.
Okay.
Ms. Kayla?
Aye.
Ms. Kaskowski?
Aye.
Ms. Williams?
Aye.
Under Job and Family, authorize purchase service agreements with various vendors for Title 20 Social Service Block Grant Funded Services for State Fiscal Year 12, effective July 1st, 2011 through June 30th, 2012. Authorize Director to execute on behalf of Board and amend for changes in programming and increase value with Prosecutor's approval as to form. One Cambridge Home Health Services of Alariah for Homemaker Home Health Services in amount not to exceed $18,000. Neighborhood House Association Lorraine County Lorraine for emergency shelter services in amount not to exceed $50,000. Lorraine County Safe Harbor Lorraine for domestic violence services in amount not to exceed $2,500. Volunteer Guardianship Organization Lorraine County Alariah for adult guardianship services in amount not to exceed $9,000.
So moved.
Second?
Discussion. Ms. Kayla?
Aye.
Ms. Kaskowski?
Aye.
Ms. Williams?
Aye.
Authorize purchase service agreement with Murray Ridge Production Center Alariah for cleaning services for State Fiscal Year 12, effective July 1st, 2011 through June 30th, 2012, in the amount not to exceed $4,500. Authorize Director to execute on behalf of Board and amend for changes in program and increase value with Prosecutor's approval as to form.
So moved.
Second?
Discussion. Ms. Kayla?
Aye.
Ms. Kaskowski?
Aye.
Ms. Williams?
Aye.
Under Solid Waste, instruct Clerk to seek proposals from bidders for Operation E-Scrap Collection Recycling Program for the year 2012, with two optional one-year renewal noticed in Chronicle on June 24th and July 1st, pre-meeting at 10:00 a.m. on July 6th, room 532 at 5th floor Administration Building, and open at 2:00 p.m. on July 15th in meeting room D.
So moved.
Second?
Discussion.
Yes, I see Mr. Bailey's up to talk about our e-scrap.
Good morning, Commissioners. Yeah, it's been three years, and it's time to go back out. The market has changed extremely in this area, and we're hoping for a positive change in our costs, all right?
Okay.
Wonderful.
Great. It's working well over there.
Yeah.
Ms. Kayla?
Aye.
Ms. Kaskowski?
Aye.
Ms. Williams?
Ms. Williams?
Out of vote for number...
For Solid Waste.
It's like Jim now. He doesn't pay attention.
Under Workforce, amend Resolution 11377 adopted June 15, 2011, approving and entering purchase of service contract with Workforce Institute for the Purchase One-Stop Service Coordinator, effective July 1st, 2010, in the amount of $2,913,974. Said amendment is to reflect an increase of $39,808 due to the Rapid Response Coordinator funding from UEA Services.
So moved.
Second?
Discussion. Ms. Kayla?
Aye.
Ms. Kaskowski?
Aye.
Ms. Williams?
Aye.
Approve and enter an MOU with Workforce Institute Lorraine County and Workforce Development Agency to assist in the hiring and employment of a youth work experience coordinator, her primary's function is to place youth program participants into work experiences with local employers for 2011, 2012. WDA will reimburse Workforce Institute for all direct expenses related to employment, including salary in the amount not to exceed $52,000, benefit and mileage.
So moved.
Second?
Discussion. Ms. Kayla?
Aye.
Ms. Kaskowski?
Aye.
Ms. Williams?
Aye.
Under the Sheriff, apply for 50% reimbursements through the Office of Justice Programs Bull approved Vess Partnership Program, and if approved, will return $17,000 to Sheriff's Equipment Account. This is necessary by contract in accordance with manufacturer specification, the vessel required to be replaced every five years.
So moved.
Second?
Discussion. Ms. Kayla?
Aye.
Ms. Kaskowski?
Aye.
Ms. Williams?
Aye.
Madam Clerk, can you go back to number 16, 17, and 18, please?
Increased Sailing Use Tax pursuant to Ohio arrest Code 5739.021 and 5741.021 by 1/4 of 1% for a five-year period of time for purposes of supporting criminal administrative justice services in Lorraine County. Notice will be in the Chronicle and Journal on June 29th and July 6th, public hearings on July 13th and 20th at 10:00 a.m., and an informational hearing on July 13th at 5:00 p.m. This will be on the November 8, 2011 ballot and become effective April 1st, 2012.
Also move, if I get the second, then we'll go...
The second, then we'll...
Discussion.
Mm-hmm.
Our Budget Director Lisa Hobart with some numbers. What we've prepared, well, what Lisa's prepared is the revenues and expenditures for 2011 and 2012 for the purpose of discussing putting a sales tax on the ballot in November, and I will turn it over to you, Ms. Hobart.
Good morning.
Morning.
Well, we're looking at, I don't know exactly how you want me to format this.
Well, give us an overview, starting with the estimated revenue.
Okay, our estimated revenue as of right now, that's certified by the Budget Commission, is for 2011, $42,143,000. For 2012, which I have received the budget packages in May of this year, which will be certified in July when we do the tax budget for the Budget Commission, $41,280,000.
So a shortfall of close to $1 million in less revenues for 2012.
Correct. Now, in saying that, we can go back to 2011. Our current estimate for local government is $3.5 million. It looks like we will, projected revenue to come in in that account will be approximately $4.2 million, and that does include all of the cuts that the state has passed down to us. Our sales tax is trending at a higher rate. Our current estimate in there is $14.4 million. It looks like we are slated to receive $14.8. Could be slightly higher than that for this year. Our projected expenditures for this year are about $45.2 million. Projected expenditures for 2012 are approximately $52.8 million.
And that being that we don't have the $6.8 million from the Criminal Justice Fund from two years ago?
Correct.
To fund the jail and the prosecutor's office, that money now falls back, well, that responsibility goes back in the general fund?
To the general fund. Correct.
To fund. It's not what we raised spending, $7 million.
Sorry.
It's not that we raised spending, $7 million for next year.
Absolutely not. No. So we're looking at, with our estimated revenues and projected carryovers versus our expenditures for 2012, a shortfall of approximately $6.2 million.
Discussion?
We talked about this before. The, with the expenditures on, for 2012, $52 million, or we can go with the 2011. How much control do we, as a Board, have over the expenditures?
I did those numbers.
I thought it was a third, wasn't it?
Hang on, I've got it all broken down here on one of these pages. Basically, out of $52 million general fund, looking at 2012, untouchable based on what the Board has spoke about, not touching the safety at all, sheriffs and/or jail, we are looking at untouchable of $28 million. Now, if you add the prosecutors into the touchable, I'm sorry, into the touchable part, we're at $26 million untouchable. Untouchable's $28 million, including the prosecutors, figuring the courts will require us to have prosecutors in every courtroom.
Correct.
If they don't, then we've got $26 million, which gives us $26 million of non-journal entryed monies. So that would leave $26 million, working off of that number...
Does that include the Board of Elections?
No. Board of Elections is an untouchable.
Right. So that's...
The untouchables, what I have as untouchables, where I did it...
Yeah, why don't you name those that we can't touch?
The untouchables is the appellate court at $197,000, common pleas court at $3.2 million, all of domestic relations courts at $7 million, probate court at half a million, even though we've seen some cost savings out of there of $20,000. I put the Clerk's office at $1.1 million as an untouchable, based on, you know, we'd have to figure the breakdown. The muni courts within the county, Lorraine, Alariah, Oberlin, and Avon Lake are mandated. That's $1.1 million. Then mentioned, no touching the sheriff, that's $5.2 million. And then we've got the veteran services from last year's budget, this isn't the increase they've asked for this year, at $1 million approximately, as ones we don't have the ability to change lower.
Correct.
And that number could go up to a half a million dollar more, based on the ask from the Veteran Services Commission, which we'll be discussing next week. So basically, if you take the $26 million that we do have say over that won't be ordered or we have to fund, we were talking yesterday, probably in the area, Jim, a third of those dollars are fixed costs that can't be touched anyway, correct?
I'm sorry, Commissioner.
I told you he doesn't pay attention.
Well, you guys are having a discussion, I was reading something else.
Just taking the fixed costs...
Yeah, I thought there was about, when we spoke briefly yesterday, if you look in there, the biggest line items are obviously benefits and salaries, but some of the fixed costs that we pay for in some of the other lines, probably about 30%.
Right. So taking that 30% number, a third basically, and taking $9 million away from that $26 million, would be about $17 million in personnel costs that would be touchable, and you would have to take a third of that out to make the $6 million shortfall.
There's a small and smaller pie to be able to deal with the problem if we have no ability to work within 70, 75% of the other general fund areas of expenses. So clearly, with a large deficit, you have a small pool to drink from, so...
And that pool being recorder, treasurer?
Recorder, treasurer, auditor, parts of the Clerk's Court's office and the Commissioners' office.
Correct.
And prosecutor, parts of the prosecutor's office would be included in that.
Parts.
Parts. I don't know what it would be, potentially. And then we have out of that also, I went through what we've always, our allocation's discretionary, and if we cut everything we're doing there, it's about $564,000. Community Alliance, eliminating county transit. I don't know if we have to do an Office on Aging, is that required?
Well, we can't eliminate transit altogether.
I know we can't, but I was doing total numbers, trying to find a...
The Office on Aging is, is, under the Ohio Arrest Code, how you supplement it is discretionary.
Okay, well, $78,000.
But that's bare, that's bare minimum.
The $78,000 is salary and benefits of the Director.
Right.
And then we had...
And you also give them in-kind force base on the Gates Building.
And then that would be touching the Glide Project, Team Lorraine County, the Chamber, OSU Extension, so time for you.
Soil and water.
And soil and water. OSU Extension, if we don't fund it to the minimum, $86,400, plus the approximate $15,000, we give it out of solid waste, we eliminate the 4-H program.
Correct.
Okay, all right. Learned that a couple of years back. That's only half a million bucks. So, I mean, there's not a whole lot of discretionary, we've eliminated most of discretionary spending. I didn't put the airport in those numbers because we've been down that road again, and that's only $50,000.
You know, we're down from some highs of $600,000, less than 10 years ago, to $50,000 a year, and we're growing corn on the roof of the buildings. So if you eliminate that $50,000, you essentially shut down the airport, and then you're back with your FAA problem. It's barely open now.
We have to do it, so, I mean, that I didn't put in that number.
We don't have an option there.
Right, I didn't put that number in. So I tried to do a breakdown of what, you know, things we've talked about, what can be touched, can't be touched, but you're talking at $6 million out of $17 million that is able to be touched, and we've only got approximately 525 general fund employees now, down from about 750. When Commissioner Krikowski and myself first came into office, we're down a third. I would have to wonder where we're going to come up with another third of that personnel.
I mean, I'm, I'm okay with going through and passing a resolution to have the hearings to allow the voters to decide if we're going to have a sales tax increase. My concern on here is one-to-five-year period. I would like to have that reduced to three years. And then something that came in, I'm not sure if you got this, from Mr. Ennis regarding the...
I got all kinds.
Legal state issue, I brought up yesterday, just, or last week, talking about if we went through and did a reduction in the 1.6 inside mill for the property tax, and then possibly even going with a half percent increase in the sales tax, offset it. That way, we're giving a break to...
Homeowners?
Homeowners, property owners, seniors and that. And then it's up to the taxpayers to decide if they want to pay the tax or not, as far as what items they want to purchase. So we give them a break there.
So you're looking at an option of, we would then put a hold on our 1.6 inside millage. Give me some language.
Yeah, it was, it was an interesting statute, and it was, Commissioner Williams had brought it up last week, and we were previously of the understanding that if we didn't utilize our inside millage, other people could invade, we call it invading that inside millage. Jerry went back and, you know, did some research and shredded the code a bit, and came up with a way of basically parking the inside millage. You may want to speak from there.
Right. After our last meeting, I did some further research, and for some reason, this isn't cross-referenced with the sales tax statutes, but there is a statute, Section 5705.313, that does allow the Commissioners to reduce the inside millage in connection solely with the kind of sales taxes that we are considering here, and if that is done, then no other entity is permitted to take that inside millage.
Would we need then, at that point, probably to get a number from the auditor, what that would affect per homeowner, I guess, within the county, if the 1.6 inside millage was taken off, so they knew what kind of savings they would have?
Lisa, how much are we generating on the inside millage right now?
8.3?
About 8.1.
You, you can do it in parts. I mean, you can reduce part of your inside, the only key is you're not allowed to reduce it more than your sales tax brings in.
The, yeah, the good thing is that Jerry said it wasn't cross-referenced. I believe that we're able to basically suspend, park the inside millage until a future date if you change that, because it's linked to the sales tax. If it wasn't linked to the sales tax, then we'd be exposed for somebody else to try to claim that inside millage up to the 10 mil limitation. So it was an interesting statute there, and it could, it could shift some costs around with regard to the sales tax.
Well, it takes it off the property owners and puts it on everybody else as a use tax.
It does become a consumer tax. So, but, you know, mindful that you're going to have those folks that come out that are going to indicate to you that sales tax are regressive taxes. So we went through that the last time.
Been there, done that.
You know, I just got the information this morning, I was taking a look at it, so it's the reason it's not on here.
Yeah, that's not time-sensitive, Commissioner. You can, actually, you probably have to wait until you, you pass the other resolution before you do that, but you, that can be done at any time.
Okay, so we don't actually have to pass a resolution on what the verbiage is going to be for November. We just have to pass a resolution to have hearings.
We don't do the verbiage?
Oh, tonight, yeah.
Today, yeah.
So, Item 16, 17, 18, we don't have to get into that type of detail today.
Well, we do because we have, I mean, you can, you can consider as many as you want. But we have to publish notice, and in that notice, we have to have exactly what we're considering. So, if we're going to consider a half, then we should also publish notices of a half.
Do we have a copy of our resolutions?
I think last time we did, what, six or eight?
I can get it. I don't have it out here with me.
You don't have it out here?
No. That's just, I think, having all those out there confuse the public. And they think that we're going after everything. You know, I think if we decide, more specifically, what we think we need, or what we know we need, then I think it would be easier for people to understand. I don't want this starting off as something that's confusing to people.
Well, I mean, and the only reason being, bringing out the language is on the half a percent. And adding the temporary language to it, and then coinciding that with the possibility of using the half a percent, rolling back the property tax.
The inside millage thing, you don't have to do.
You don't have, you just need the language for the half a percent.
So, they would all read the same, except you would take the quarter and put the half in your ears. Everything else would read the same. So, the first one is just for your criminal administrative justice.
Well, Commissioner Williams also brought up the possibility of going for a three-year, not a five-year. So, we would have to have that also.
There's, there's also, there may be another slight issue there. And we need to check on that eventually, not right now. And that is, in master indentures for some of our bonds, I believe that we do reference the fact that we set aside and dedicate a portion of the inside millage each year. When we set the, the inside, you know, what's going to operations and what's going to debt service.
Make sure that service is covered first.
Well, I have to make sure we stay in conformity with that. If we've indicated in those documents, Craig, you know the ones I'm talking about, you know, that we make certain assertions in there. And I know that we have, probably going to debt service about 3 million of that, 8?
About 2.1.
2.1 of the Justice Center. Well, we, that, that load's going down. So, but we have to make sure that we don't do, take enough away from the, take too much away from the inside millage where we're not making the set aside for our debt service on our bonds.
Well, we're talking about that, though, and we've got the veterans here. The veterans get one-half of one mil under the language?
Well, they're, they're eligible.
For up to 2.5.
Up to 1.5 of one mil, if we eliminate the inside millage.
They're, they're...
I'm just asking the language. I don't...
Again, you, remember, we talked about that language. When they passed that, there was no inside millage able to levy that tax on. It was already fully, right, there was no... So, it was an unfunded mandate. So, the number that they're going to use is still predicated upon that. Where you get the money is up to you.
Okay, all right, then. I'm just asking. So, okay, we have 16, 17, and 18. We want to add 16A, 17A, or Bs, 18Bs to the half a percent?
Well, let's first talk about...
Why are we talking about a half a percent? I thought we were...
Tom just brought up the possibility of going for a half a percent and doing a rollback of the inside millage.
Yeah, it, it still gives us the same amount of money that we're asking for to get through the budget shortfall.
No, about a million, one short, because it's 8.1 million inside millage, and we're figuring sales tax 6.5 to 7 million.
But we're also going to get that increase for the...
Correct, so we trade it across.
Right. What it does is it, it just gives the property tax people a break.
Right.
So, seniors and that, it's going to give them a break.
Right.
I mean, everyone a break. But it's just another way where we can get the revenue that we have, and where we're lowering the taxes for something that people normally can't lower, and that's property taxes.
Well, I have no problem with that. I actually like the idea.
Yeah, I think it's a great idea.
So, now with the, the three years on it, we know that there's a possibility that we will get an additional revenue source from the state, possibility. And that with, with the casinos. And that's why I was looking at three years. I believe it also gives the voters, they know that in three years, we're going to have to still stay on top of the budget, be fiscal responsible with it. And three years, I think, they may go for over five years. That's just my personal opinion on that.
Well, just a matter of bringing it back, if you were, well, it depends if we can do the half percent or the quarter percent. I guess we would decide that at that point. If it's a quarter percent, I would think just to try and figure out where we're going to be in the next couple of years, we would need the five years, because I don't see the economy springing back in two or three. If we're doing the half a percent, I wouldn't mind the three, because we would be able to, you know, reinstitute the inside millage. We'd be parking. So, I mean, I guess it would be how we would explain it out there.
I, I would prefer to keep both of them at the same, the same years, three years on that. We can go through, we can add the, like you said, 16A and 17A to it, and just talk about it in the discussions in the open forum.
How do you want to word this?
Well, they would have to be, I mean, if you're going to...
Or do we have to go to 20?
This year as a quarter, and then we would do three additional ones at the half percent. So, you're going to have six resolutions out there for public...
He's asking you to move to three years on the half percent.
We could just amend and put these as three.
Do you want to do the quarter percent at three years also?
Quarter percent at three years as well. Let's take a look. Do we need all three of these here right now?
If you're going to consider anything, this is, this has to be done in order to have your public hearings. I mean, you can decide, add on July 27th, which one you'll actually do, but you have to have all this out.
I understand that, but to move on, do we have to have the three? The three that are currently on here?
No, it's your choice. The first one is just for criminal administrative justice. The second one is for general fund and criminal administrative justice. The third one is a general...
I think we want this to go to the criminal justice.
Correct.
Let's scratch 17 and 18.
Right.
Need agreement of the board?
Absolutely.
And then we can do...
That way, everybody knows where the money's going.
Do you need a formal resolution for that, to scratch 17 and 18 from the agenda? Just take them off.
Okay. And then we'll have 16A, which would be at same verbiage, different time period, up three years. And then I guess a, a new 17, which would, or 16B, whatever you want to call it, at a half percent with the reduction on the 1.6 inside millage for property.
We put that in the sales tax language, Jerry? I thought, no.
No, that, that doesn't, that's a totally separate thing.
Right.
My only concern is if we don't put it in that language, people who are going to vote for it, they're not going to see it there. All they're going to see is a half percent sales tax.
Right, I know, but it doesn't go, it doesn't go on the ballot. It's not voted.
We cannot put that on the, in the verbiage.
We'll just have to educate them in the public hearings and in the newspapers and...
It's just a resolution you have.
What we do, here you go, Jerry.
It doesn't go on the ballot.
If we decide to put it on the ballot, whatever we come up for language, and if we end up with the half percent and rolling back, we will do a resolution the same day, once we approve the language for, that we're going to go forward.
You could just pass the resolution.
Based on passage of the half a percent, we will roll back to 1.6 inside millage. Correct? That would be the following resolution. That means during the same day, same reporting in the paper, and that's what we'll talk about if that's the one that passes.
Okay.
That work?
That works.
That works.
Okay. Okay, Madam Clerk, we have...
Back when we, back when we were putting this on the ballot in the past, I thought there was a dollar figure that we had come up with, somebody had come up with, I don't know if it was a college or somewhere, where it showed how much it would cost an average person, either was it a month or a year, for the increased sales tax.
Write it down to a day based on income.
Right. And wasn't it like $3 a day, or was it...
No, it was less than that. Someone made a...
A quarter a day?
It was, based on a $50,000 income, I think it was like $10 a month or something.
I'd like to define those again. Do we have all that? And then to get an idea of if this is going to be a wash for the homeowners and the, and our seniors as far as, you know, how much they would normally spend on sales tax and how much they're spending on...
Well, Commissioner, it, it can't be a wash if we don't raise any additional revenue. So, you know, I, I think it's going to offset and shift some of the burden around a little bit.
Right.
But it, but it still is a revenue enhancement application. So, the, the, there may be, there may be some that, that end up, and at the end of the day, saving us a little bit of money. But all in all, this is going to be a revenue increasing mode.
But what it would be, though, Jim, to argue that point, though, is the seniors, who don't spend as much dollars on taxable items, because meds aren't taxed, most groceries aren't taxed.
Right.
They might see some net savings on it.
I understand. I, I just don't know there's going to be that many people that are going to be completely neutral.
We're in the middle of a motion, David. Can you wait a minute? All right, can I call for the vote on Number 16 as it's presented?
Mr. Kallo.
Aye.
Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Mr. Williams.
Aye.
And that's at a quarter percent for five years, exactly, is it?
That's at the quarter percent.
Okay. And the next one would be exactly as it reads, their increased sale and use tax for one quarter for three years for criminal justice.
Okay.
Also moved.
Second.
Discussion. Mr. Kallo.
Aye.
Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Mr. Williams.
Aye.
Then 16, the, the third one would be exactly as it is, except increased sales and use tax for half a percent for a three-year period.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Mr. Kallo.
Aye.
Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Mr. Williams.
Aye.
Go ahead, David. Do you have a comment?
Thank you, Commissioners. I just wanted to point out that even seniors, if they're renting, are going to end up having an adjustment based on, I mean, if the landlords actually lower their rents or keep their rents from rising any, because they are paying less. I mean, somebody's paying that property tax. So, let's just remember that it, you know, seniors who are living on fixed incomes in rental property, if the landlords pass it on, great. But if they don't, seniors are going to pay the one and not get any relief on the other. So, just be a little careful by, in saying, you know, what happens to seniors with all this?
Well, I was just using that, because they're the lowest portion that pays into an increased sales tax, because they spend the least amount of untaxable goods. So, that's a comparison we used a couple of years ago.
I understand. I just mean, again, where that additional quarter comes from, if, if you roll back the inside millage, it's not, you know, even if they're not property owners, they may see savings, but they won't necessarily. And that depends on the renting versus owning.
Well, I still think Lorraine County, the bulk of the residents are probably homeowners at this point, or live in single-family homes, and they do rental properties. I don't know.
Well, it's, in Oberlin, it's, it's more like half and half, so...
Lorraine's the same one.
Yeah. I just, just when you're pushing it, I'm, I'm for it. I, I went for, I voted for a half a percent without any of this stuff, but...
Thank you, David.
Any other comments from the audience? I guess we can go on to public comment real quick before we report, since we're talking about it. I guess not. Madam Clerk, back to you.
Mr. Cortez, County Minister.
Except to say, I hope I see everybody out at the Best of Lorraine County Thursday evening. Come out and support Lorraine County's finest and best organizations, and vote for your favorite. It was a big success last year, and we're hoping for even a larger turnout this year. It's really important to the merchants and entrepreneurs and people that have stuck it out through the downturn in the economy, and things are coming back for them. So, be a great time to see a lot of what the Best of Lorraine County has to offer. And it's that Spitzer Conference Center out the college. It's from 6 until 9 o'clock Thursday night. I know this won't be had by them, but for those in the audience and word of mouth passing, we want to get a lot of people out there. And that concludes my comments. Thanks.
Mr. Ennis, this is Kenny Pressky.
Commissioners, I do need a very short executive session, no more than five minutes at max.
Okay.
Well, don't let Cortez in there then.
Updating, updating pending litigation, and I need to discuss a real estate purchase involved with developmental disabilities.
Commissioners, report.
Well, I told you last week I was heading over to our collection center to give away a rocker to the 10,000th car that went through our facility last Wednesday. So, here is a picture of Gail and Ron Schenk. It's one chair. We only gave one chair away, but they both took a picture of each of them sitting in it, and they loved it. I'll tell you what, what a busy place. We had not only people dropping off hazardous, household hazardous waste and bulbs and all kinds of things, we also had e-scrap going on on the other side, where the college was giving away refurbished computers to those people who had finished their training program, their computer training program. So, everybody is very excited about our collection center. It's clean, it, it runs like clockwork, and I was very proud of all the people working there. They work very hard and doing a great job. I also, Monday, attended the Goodwill, my board meeting. And year-to-date, the Goodwills that the commissioners have provided to Goodwill for their use to, to transport people around is now at 1,390 rides. So, they're doing a lot of good out in our community. And on note of busing, I received something from Colleen Donnelly from Nauhauaka. And there is an opportunity for people to get buses through Nauhauaka. And I, I know the veterans were looking for a bus. And I, you need to get on a list, and I can help you through that process if you need a bus for transportation for our veterans. And we'll get you through that process and get much-needed transportation for our veterans, so. And I see one of our, our commissioners are in the audience. Did you not get the message that our meeting is next week?
No.
No, we did not.
You did not?
No, we adjusted all that. It's 9:45 next week.
We had a communication breakdown on our end.
Oh, no. All right. And I believe that is the end of my report.
No report.
No report, wow.
I had CCAO, I had state budget issues. Working with Lisa on our budget here. That's just normal stuff.
Actually, the EPA issue that we had here, you got Mr. Cortez in touch with the Governor's Office to work on that. Jim, I'm just going to have you go through and give an update, since you know the details.
Well, we did make it down. The Governor's Office did provide his aide, Scott, worked with us. I think he made a call in there on that, from your office.
Yes.
And Commissioner Kallo was also lobbying downstate for that. So, well, we got some real good assistance out of the Governor's Office, once we got their attention. And we did meet with a lot of people from the EPA. Republic was there, Jerry was there, Keith Bailey was there. I would say the meeting was pretty intense for, for about an hour. And at the, towards the conclusion, we told the EPA that we would be agreeable to any solution that didn't cost the residents of Lorraine County any financial burden. They, they went out and caucused on their team, and, and they came back, and they offered a remedy which would put orders and findings against us for reallocating funds around the plan to do what we did, but they will not be finding for any recoveries, any fees, any fines. And we have another, additional six months to, to arrange the relationship differently, which in essence puts us into the new plan, which already takes care of that. So, it, it, it looked like an agreeable solution that accomplished things on multiple levels. It gave the EPA what they wanted, which was to prevent other counties from being as innovative as we were and finding a way of doing something that they didn't agree with, but we're still within our plan. But it also made sure that it maintained the integrity of our, our dollar structure here and our, our fee structure and our abilities to continue moving forward in solid ways. So, I, I believe it was a good solution for everybody. That, that should be coming down, I would think, in the next week or two. Didn't they indicate that, Jerry?
Yes, it should be.
So, on behalf of the Board, I, I did tentatively agree to that settlement. But when it comes down, you'll have to, you know, more fully take a look at it. But I think working with them down there was pretty good. What I was very excited about was that we got a resolution at the meeting. We didn't go away, have three more letter-writing campaigns, have another meeting. I've worked with the EPA before. It's, it's been, you know, a painful process over months, sometimes years, going back and forth. We actually crafted a solution, got right to the, to meet at the issue, and did it all in about an hour and 10 minutes, and we were on our way back to Lorraine County. And that is a new experience for me down in Columbus.
Commissioner, I think they were, they were very supportive of the objectives that we accomplished there by saving our, our program and at the same time, saving jobs. They were concerned that if, if other entities use the same mechanisms, they would do it in an abusive manner. So, they wanted to make sure they didn't establish precedent, add precedent for their program. But I think in the end, they agreed with what we accomplished through the process.
Well, thank you, gentlemen, for going down there and representing Lorraine County. Last thing I want to bring up is, I had a college student, Lorraine County resident, Joshua Bates. He's from Ashland University. He's been doing some work here. Josh, if you could come up and just give us an update where you're at and the project that you're working on.
Thank you, Commissioner Williams. Good morning, Commissioners. My name is Joshua Bates, as Mr. Williams just said. And first and foremost, I am a resident of Lorraine County, and I have been since 1995. And I'm currently a senior at Ashland University. I'm working on my bachelor's in economics and political science, and I'll graduate in December. Earlier this year, my advisor and myself, Dr. Nadler, we met with Commissioner Williams about my senior thesis project that I was planning on working on. And my thesis project is the creation of a multivariate regression analysis model of county government. And I decided to do this on Lorraine County, because I'm from here. And all across the US, local governments are facing fiscal crises, as, I mean, you guys were just discussing. And in order to, for public officials to make accurate decisions on the budget, they need to have a predicated and causal effect model, so that they can ask what-if questions as if they cut funding to something, what will happen? And my thesis is to create a type of model that can be used across the board for county governments. And that's where I'm at at the moment. I'm currently working on it as we speak.
Good for you.
And will you have it completed? We need it.
My goal is to have it completed at the very latest, by the time I graduate. But I am ahead of schedule, and my, I will have something physical to give the county at no cost when I finish soon. I can't put a date on it at the moment.
Sounds like a lot of work.
Yeah.
It is, and I am working on it. And it's, like I said, it's at zero cost to the county. I'm not asking for anything from it, and it's just going to be given, so.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
End of report.
Before we go on, I have a letter up here from Captain Drazdowski. We were unsuccessful in obtaining the COPS grants in 2009 and 2010. And you are looking for a resolution to, for a cash match for the COPS grant? Or what, what do you need from us? Do you need something from us today?
No, he doesn't need it. For two or three weeks, we spoke to Drazd, you were not forgetting. I spoke to Mr. Williams and myself. It's just some numbers.
Do you, did you want to talk about it? Give him a chance.
We still got to read through the numbers.
Yeah.
That was the, that was the budgetary stuff.
Yeah, I put in another COPS grant for two more officers. But what I brought today was a spreadsheet indicating, should we get the grant, what it would cost in year one, from the County General Fund, year two, year three, and then finally, in year four, which you got to take the whole salaries and everything. And I had spoken to Mr. Kallo about it earlier. I figured you can look at it, and then if next week you want to bring it up, we can discuss it at that time. But Teresa asked me to bring the spreadsheet, because this kind of was the same questions were asked the last time, to see what the county's going to be basically on the hook for, should we get this grant. So, it's, probably we can wait another week, and it's not going to hurt anything.
Okay.
But we did apply, since it was out there. And we can only apply for two, according to the formula of the COPS grant. But we're still out there applying for the grants, trying to get guys back.
Well, I, I hope we get it this time.
I do, too.
We deserve it.
Well, we're trying.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to address the Board? Go ahead, Teresa.
Is Tom done?
Yes, he said he was done with his report.
Yes, he said he was done with his report.
9:30, we will meet with Huron County Commissioners with regards to the joint Draper Ditch Project Board Correspondence.
Will the reading be waived?
Second.
Discussion. Mr. Kelo.
Aye.
Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Mr. Williams.
Aye.
Public comment?
I think they already passed on that, so. Motion to move an executive session is outlined by our county administrator, well, our county prosecutor.
Second.
Mr. Kelo.
Aye.
Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Mr. Williams.
Aye.
This has been a broadcast of the recent Lorraine County Commissioners' General Meeting. Unless otherwise announced, meetings are held Wednesday morning at 9:30 at the Administration Building, 226 Middle Avenue, 4th floor, downtown Alariah. These are public meetings, and you are invited to attend. Agendas are posted prior to the meeting at www.lorainecounty.us. Click on Departments to see the Commissioners' page, then click on View Agenda for a printable copy of the agenda.
The evening sky is a crowded place, overflowing with thousands of voices and sounds sent swiftly but silently at the speed of light. From places far and near, these invisible messages arrive at their destinations to be transformed magically by a wonder called radio. Two million people around the world enjoy this wireless window to the world, and they're called amateur radio operators or HAMs. This is their story, the fascinating fun hobby and public service of amateur radio. Amateur radio is a worldwide hobby and public service, enjoyed by people from all walks of life. Men, women, young and old, all share a common love of communication.
Seven, eight signals from both of you, and could copy you 100% all the time, so the band was kind of, kind of striking.
Many enjoy casual conversations with others across the country or around the world. Today, amateur radio is closely linked to computers, connecting keyboards and PCs to radios in a variety of ways. Amateur radio operators come from all walks of life: housewives, students, missionaries, movie stars, and just plain folks. They're all ages, all nationalities, and income levels. Radio HAMs are licensed by the US government after passing a multiple-answer examination covering rules, radio theory, and operating practices. Study guides are available that include a pool of questions from which actual test questions are selected. No previous radio or electronics experience is necessary. Most amateur radio operators set up their own home stations. Some enjoy using voice, while others use Morse code or digital modes, and some even use amateur television. Bruce Thorne, KE8TI, shows the main elements of a basic ham radio station.
This is an example of a typical amateur radio station. It consists mainly of the transceiver, which is a combination transmitter and receiver, and most of the amateur transceivers today are powered with 12 volts, so you need a power supply to convert 110 volts into 12 volts. You also have an additional speaker, which is an accessory, but it improves the sound of the transmission a great deal. There are also people who trans, or communicate with Morse code or CW. And also, people use microphones as well. Then a clock is also needed because everybody works on coordinated universal time, which is equivalent to the old Greenwich time. Many HAMs today also connect their computer to their station and work with digital modes. This particularly is a mode called PSK31, and you communicate through the radio with your computer. Also, the computer is used for logging contacts, which makes paper obsolete and improves the consistency of the station operation. And of course, the final element in an amateur station is the antenna. The antenna can be as simple as a homemade wire antenna, or as involved as a multi-element commercial aluminum beam, and that completes your station.
You could take ham radio anywhere with you, portable or mobile. If you want to talk around the world, it's very simple. You just mount a radio inside your vehicle, such as this one here, and a fairly simple antenna on the back of the vehicle will let you talk anywhere in the world.
We're here at Chagrin Lagoons Yacht Club, which I'm a member, and we also have a amateur radio club here, which has, oh, about 60, 70 members. Most of them are husbands and wives. The reason for the success of this club is that amateur radio goes with boating. And when we're traveling, we pretty much know where some of the other HAMs are, when they're expected back, what they're doing, all by way of amateur radio.
Well, there's one other way to enjoy ham radio, and that is use it while you're flying with this handheld transceiver. It's a two-meter transceiver. When I'm up in the air, say at 5,000 feet, I can see much farther, and therefore I can transmit much farther. So it's a lot of fun flying and using ham radio at the same time.
Or you might just want to take your radios up, up, and away in hot air balloons. Dan Greathouse, N8 NBC, keeps in touch with his ground crew via amateur radio, using a handy talking.
Okay, I'm gonna call on the other one and tell them we're gonna be on 144.34 here.
Chippewa Lake, that's Chippewa Lake, Joe.
Okay, it's the shoreline with the boats on there.
Roger.
That also supplies interesting aerial views while gliding through the sky at about 3,000 feet by using an amateur television transmitter. What he sees from above is relayed by HAM TV to other amateur operators on the ground. Ham radio is enjoyed the world over. Each country has its own international callsign prefix and licensing procedures. Many foreign radio operators use English, so it's easy to get to know them and learn their way of life. Radio contacts between the US and England are common because there's no language barrier.
Amateur radio is a wonderful way to meet people all around the world. Now, here's Kings Lynn. This is an ancient town. All the traffic into the town passes through this gateway, which was built in 1520. From my home here in Kings Lynn, England, I've made friends with people in many countries, including, of course, the United States. In fact, I've been keeping in close touch by ham radio with my friends in Ohio since about 1970. They've been over here to visit us, and we've been over there to visit them. You can see that ham radio really shows what a small world it is, and it's a hobby that can be enjoyed by people everywhere.
When emergencies strike, radio HAMs are ready. This public service tradition is the serious side of amateur radio, in addition to being a fun hobby. When normal communications fail, HAMs are ready to offer their services, as they did when Hurricane Ophelia hit the eastern coast of North Carolina in September of 2005.
This is Whiskey 4 Romeo, Julie Fox Trot Net Control for the North Carolina Tar Hill Emergency Net. This net has been activated in response to Hurricane Ophelia, which is currently out the North Carolina coast.
Well, the main function is backup communications in case the telephone systems go down, or the two-way radio, satellite phones, whatever they have in management. Our traffic here has been mainly information-type traffic, where we would hear information such as a power outage that would occur, and we would immediately relay that to emergency management, and that was our function, vice versa, it goes either way. Ham radio operators working in, in our area, a lot of us are engineers, and we have built the antenna, antennas to stand a CAT 5. We've got strong coax, our towers are very, very strong. This thing's not going anywhere. Our radios are solid, we do have backup power, we've got backup to the backup power. So we are in good shape, we have plenty of HF communications, and I really believe that we could take a CAT 5. We've, we've never been down. We are 100% up at all times. Our communications has never failed. And so as some other folks have so nicely put it into a phrase, we are hard, fast, and fail-safe. So we are, we are always up. Other communications, and I spoke with management just the day before yesterday, one of the county coordinators, who I reminded him of in '99 when their satellite phones went out, and he kind of looked and said, "Yeah." I said, "We were it." And so we were the communications, and so we're kind of pleased with that, we really are.
CK Field Day, CK Field Day. This is Kilo Eight Uniform, Tango Tango, Field Day.
Each year, radio HAMs across the country conduct an emergency drill called Field Day. For 24 hours, operators set up temporary communication command posts, using portable generators or batteries to power their radio equipment. This station used solar power for its 5-watt transmitter. Shelters are often tents or mobile homes, and temporary antennas are erected in simple ways. Operators test their communication skills by exchanging messages with other Field Day stations. Some use voice, while others use digital modes with computer keyboards or Morse code keys. Participating radio clubs are ranked according to their ability to handle large numbers of messages over the continuous 24-hour drill. It's a fun exercise, but also one with a serious side, preparing for a real emergency should it come. The International Space Station symbolizes how the amateur radio service operates in the space age. Many astronauts are also licensed radio HAMs who operate while in orbit. It's a place to meet and greet friends, met on the shortwave bands. There's a lot of new radio equipment on display, a massive radio flea market where HAMs sell their used equipment. It's a good place to get that extra piece of equipment you couldn't afford new. There are forums, food, and much more.
My dad was my prime influence in getting my license. He had been a HAM since he was about 15 years old, and, you know, all the time when I was little, he'd get me in kids contests. He would just saturate me with information about ham radio and, you know, just trip right on me, and I got so interested in it that I said, "Dad, I want to be a HAM too." So he started teaching me code when I was five or six, and we worked out to learn all the theory things about ham radio, and here I am today, I'm 15, and my call is K3000.
The Young Ladies Radio League is an international organization comprised of women from all over the US, as well as countries all over the world, and there's a lot of things we do to let women know about the hobby. We have contests that the women can participate in, and there's also contests, our most popular one is a YLOM, where the women call the men and the men call the women, and get QSL cards for contests. And we also provide scholarships for the young ladies who are interested in going to engineering field. We also provide our publication via Braille on tape for our members who are, you know, who are blind. So we try to approach every aspect of the hobby. We have women's interested in satellite communication, digital communication, VHF, HF, contesting, just about anything you, you're interested in. And one of the unique things about YLOM is we have the women perspective. Even though it is a male-dominated hobby, it's a family, that the whole family can do, because you, we have both young girls and boys involved in it, we have women involved in it and men. So it's truly a family hobby that everyone can do, everyone can enjoy, and everyone has a lot of fun with.
Dee Logan, a veteran ham radio operator, has helped dozens of persons enter the ranks as operators.
What you've seen in this video gives you a good cross-section of the wonderful world of ham radio. I hope it answered your questions. I've been a HAM for many years, and I will tell you that people from all walks of life are in the hobby. It's terrific to have friends around the world, and I hope you're interested enough to follow through. Actually, a lot of ways of doing that. You can go to an established HAM who is licensed, who can answer some questions. You can go to a radio club, which might offer some classes that would help you prepare. Or you could study on your own, as many people do. There are a lot of good references available. One of the ones that we use is this one called Now You're Talking. This is published by the American Radio Relay League, the national organization of HAMs, and it contains everything you need to prepare for the FCC entry-level technician license. You'll find a lot of things in here that will answer a lot of your questions, including a question pool synopsis. So every question on the examination is, is drawn from the question pool, which is in the book. So really, there are no surprises when you take the license exam. You can find these reference books perhaps at your local library, you can find them at a local retailer perhaps, or you can write to the American Radio Relay League, which has books available. This is a list of publications that they have, and finding them is very easy if you can access the internet. So it's www.arrl.org. You'll find, when you go on that website, a lot of your questions answered and information that's available that you can write for. There are a lot of amateur radio magazines available, sometimes you can get them at a local bookstore. Typically, QST is published by the ARRL, that's the, the main journal. Also, there is CQ and World Radio. These are magazines that cover the wide world of ham radio, and they're quite interesting. I hope you will find amateur radio to your liking, and if you at some day get your license and get on the air, I look forward to hearing you. It's a wonderful hobby, and I'm sure you'll enjoy it as much as we do. As we say in ham radio, 73 and good luck.
Welcome to a broadcast of the recent Lorraine County Commissioners' General Meeting. Unless otherwise announced, meetings are held Wednesday morning at 9:30 at the Administration Building, 226 Middle Avenue, 4th floor, downtown Alariah. These are public meetings, and you are invited to attend. Agendas are posted prior to the meeting at www.lorainecounty.us. Click on Departments to see the Commissioners' page, then click on View Agenda.
Good morning. Can we please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning. Welcome to the June 22, 2011 Lorraine County Board of Commissioners' meeting. Commissioner Krokowski has our dog this week.
Oh, she's strong. She's a strong little girl. This is about a four-month-old, Brendel, boxer mix. She's gonna be available this Saturday at our dog pound. We have about 40-some dogs at the pound right now, so we need your help in, in coming to rescue some of our little friends out there. We have all kinds of dogs to choose from. You could also check us out on our website to see what we have available. Look at how nice she is. She's such a good girl. She wants to go home with somebody. I'm sure she'd make a wonderful pet for someone. Boxers are really, really nice dogs. So come out and help us out and... So come out and help us out and bring home a pet for your family.
Under Resolutions Number One, Job and Family Services Bills.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Mr. Kayla.
Aye.
Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Mr. Williams.
Aye.
Investments.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Mr. Kayla.
Aye.
Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Mr. Williams.
Aye.
Transfers.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Mr. Kayla.
Aye.
Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Mr. Williams.
Aye.
No advances, no repayments, requisitions.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Mr. Kayla.
Aye.
Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Mr. Williams.
Aye.
Bills.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Mr. Kayla.
Aye.
Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Mr. Williams.
Aye.
Under the Commissioners, authorize various personnel actions as indicated on the summary sheet for employees within jurisdiction Lorain County Commissioners.
Mr. Cordez?
Commissioner Kayla, I know you have pressing business shortly after the board meeting today, so I'm gonna do, not ask for an executive session, but I do want to get a resolution with regard to the labor contract we discussed in the executive session last week. So we can either do that at the conclusion here, the regular agenda items, or I can ask for that resolution now, what would be the flavor of the board.
That's the FOP contract?
Correct.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion. Mr. Kayla.
Aye.
Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Mr. Williams.
That should conclude a need for this line item. Thank you.
Approve only the reading of the same as County Commissioners' meeting minutes of June 8th and 15th, 2011.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Mr. Kayla.
Aye.
Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Mr. Williams.
Aye.
Authorize a salary adjustment, Aranda Widener bailiff, over the municipal court effective July 4, 2011, at a bi-week rate of $511.24, reflecting to Pitts County share.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Mr. Kayla.
Aye.
Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Mr. Williams.
Aye.
Approve and enter an agreement with Lorain County Growth Partnership to include a direct partnership for Northeast Ohio Sustainable Communities Consortium membership. 4.2 million was awarded by US Department of HUD for three years. To consortium with local governments and nonprofit organizations in Northeast Ohio through NUAC as formal application and fiscal agent.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Mr. Kayla.
Aye.
Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Mr. Williams.
Aye.
Authorize a supplemental trust indenture amendments to loan agreement and related documents for Series 1997 bonds issued for the benefit of EMH Regional Medical Center.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Cordez?
Mm-hmm.
Would you like to just give an update for the next three?
Actually, I can't.
Oh, you can't? Oh, okay.
I didn't put them on the agenda.
Oh, okay. Well, what they are base leaders, just asking for a change from the 1997 bonds we did for them, which we do for community health partners or Mercy Hospital also.
Yeah, I was, I had information from them, but I wasn't, I should have looked at the draft, it's my bad, I didn't see that they were on there.
I read through it, just changing a couple of things in their items that have to be changed.
Yeah, I think they're retiring some bonds.
Right.
It's still where they're cost.
Right.
But there's no, the county is not liable for any of the...
Well, they're conduit bonds. We did the conduit bonds a number of years ago, and we actually asked EMH to come back in county with their conduit bonds. They have been doing their healthcare bonds out of county. So a couple of years ago, we re-engaged them to do them here in Lorain County, and we've had a very agreeable relationship. I just wasn't, I didn't pay attention to see that this was on there this week, and I had been working with their council through our bond council, so I'm sure that everything has been provided for that was necessary.
Also moved.
Second.
Mr. Kayla.
Aye.
Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Mr. Williams.
Aye.
Authorize the supplemental trust and indenture amendments to loan agreement and related documents for Series 2001 bonds issued for benefit of EMH Regional Medical Center.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Mr. Kayla.
Aye.
Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Mr. Williams.
Aye.
Authorize the supplemental trust and indenture amendments to loan agreement and related documents for Series 2008 bonds issued for the benefit of EMH Regional Medical Center.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Mr. Kayla.
Aye.
Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Mr. Williams.
Aye. I have a question. Would you like to get through 19, 20, and 25, and then go back to 16? Pleasure of the board, so we can talk about that at the end.
Sure.
Yes. Okay. Please go to 19.
Under 911, approve and enter an MOU with Village of Wellington, where Village will provide ground area owned by the village on Fairgrounds Road, and the electricity, and then will provide this foundation space for the village's equipment and communications building. This is a relocation Lorain County Fire Systems repeaters from Southern repeater site, which is presently located at State Route 58, Peck Wadsworth Road, building the house Lorain County 911 Southwest repeater, combiner, Wellington Fire repeater, Wellington Police repeater, Southern Lorain Ambulance District repeater, and county voter site equipment.
So moved.
Second. Was this added on?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. I didn't...
This is an agreement we've been working on since we lost our Verizon site. Jerry's been very instrumental in working with the language so that we can have an alternative location for our equipment. We're also being given a portable, I guess you want to call it an office-type, to house the equipment in by Verizon. They no longer need that equipment, but we were housed with them in another location. The city of, the Village of Wellington also has some equipment, and they work collaborative with us to be able to work on, use their tower out there, thus reducing some costs. There was just some nuances with the agreement with regard to liabilities and so forth, and I think Jerry, you worked, you worked all those out in the language?
That's correct.
And this MOU will provide for no-cost solutions to relocating some antennas and equipment to support the 911 operation.
Okay.
Mr. Kayla.
Aye.
Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Mr. Williams.
Aye.
Under Job and Family, authorize purchase service agreements with various vendors for Title 20 Social Service Block Grant-funded services for state fiscal year 12, effective July 1, 2011, through June 30, 2012. Authorize director to execute on behalf of the board and amend for changes in programming and increase value with prosecutors approval as to form. One Cambridge Home Health Services Alariah for Homemaker Home Health Services in amount not to exceed 18,000. Neighborhood House Association Lorain County Lorain for emergency shelter services in amount not to exceed 50,000. Lorain County Safe Harbor Lorain for domestic violence services in amount not to exceed 2,500. Volunteer Guardianship Organization Lorain County Alariah for adult guardianship services in amount not to exceed 9,000.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Mr. Kayla.
Aye.
Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Mr. Williams.
Aye.
Authorize purchase service agreement with Murray Ridge Productions Center Alariah for cleaning services for state fiscal year 12, effective July 1, 2011, through June 30, 2012, in the amount not to exceed 4,500. Authorize director to execute on behalf of the board and amend for changes in program and increase value with prosecutors approval as to form.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Mr. Kayla.
Aye.
Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Mr. Williams.
Aye.
Under Solid Waste, instruct clerk to seek proposals from bidders for Operation E-Scrap Collection Recycling Program for the year 2012, with two optional one-year renewal notice and chronicle on June 24 and July 1. Previous meeting at 10:00 AM on July 6, room 532 at 5th floor Administration Building, and open at 2:00 PM on July 15, meeting room D.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion.
Yes, I see Mr. Bailey's up to talk about our e-scrap.
Yeah, it's been three years, and it's time to go back out. The market has changed extremely in this area, and we're hoping for a positive change in our costs, all right?
Okay. Great. It's working well over there.
Yeah.
Mr. Kayla.
Aye.
Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Mr. Williams.
Mr. Williams?
Out of vote for number...
For Solid Waste.
It's like Jim now, he doesn't pay attention.
Under Workforce, the Men Resolution 11377 adopted June 15, 2011, approving and entering purchase of service contract with Workforce Institute for the Purchase One-Stop Service Coordinator, effective July 1, 2010, in the amount of $2,913,974. Said amendment is to reflect an increase of $39,808 due to the Rapid Response Coordinator funding from U.S. Services.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Mr. Kayla.
Aye.
Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Mr. Williams.
Aye.
Approve and enter an MOU with Workforce Institute Lorain County and Workforce Development Agency to assist in the hiring and employment of a youth work experience coordinator, her primary's function is to place youth program participants into work experiences with local employers for 2011, 2012. WDA will reimburse Workforce Institute for all direct expenses related to employment, including salary, in the amount not to exceed 52,000, benefit and mileage.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Mr. Kayla.
Aye.
Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Mr. Williams.
Aye.
Under the Sheriff, apply for 50% reimbursements through the Office of Justice Programs Bull approved as partnership program, and if approved, will return 17,000 to Sheriff's Equipment Account. This is necessary by contract in accordance with manufacturer specifications of the vessel required to be replaced every five years.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Mr. Kayla.
Aye.
Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Mr. Williams.
Aye. Madam Clerk, can you go back to number 16, 17, and 18?
Increase sailing...
Our Budget Director Lisa Hobart with some numbers.